Paging Doris Wetchler. Oh, there she is.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the Borough of Elmwood Park work session meeting for September 2nd, 2021, to order at 7:08 PM. On roll call, council members Ballastery.
Here.
Ficore, Vasolo.
Here.
Golebeck.
Here.
Pellegrine absent, Council President Wetchler.
Here.
Mayor Coletti.
Here, and thank you, Erin, and good evening to all the people with us this evening. I hope you're having a wonderful summer. We'll just exclude last night and the negatives that that brought us, but in any case, that's Mother Nature. We can't do anything about that. I'd like to take a moment now, if we all could, a moment of silence for the soldiers and the civilians that died in Afghanistan. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the Record and Herald News of Woodland Park, and by posting such notice in the office of the Borough Clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and also by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8th, 2021, and published on January 13th, 2021. Ladies and gentlemen, anyone from the audience who would care to speak at this point, you could speak on any topic you wish. Yes, yes, dear, please come forth, give me your name.
Tara Abernathy.
Did you hear that?
Tara Abernathy.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Tara Abernathy, I live at 97 Miller Avenue.
One more time, Tara. Is it Tara, like in Gone?
Clara, Clara.
Oh, I thought it was like Tara with Gone in the Wind.
Yeah.
Did you ever, you didn't see that movie, did you?
It's on TV.
Okay. As God is my witness. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I love Elmwood Park. I've been living here 21 years, and I could say this was like, you know, that's been great, maybe finding any problems and correcting them or getting things to someone that will help you.
Does a good job, right?
Yeah, I go through some meetings, I think you have to get in touch with the FAA. The plane, I've been home, I just started working a couple of months ago, and I've been in my backyard. First time I spent so much time in my backyard. I can tell you, I've counted 17 planes that fly over, not only my house, but all along the, you know, along the line of my house. 17 planes in a 15-minute time zone, that's not right. And it's flat, and you can actually see the belly of that plane. That's too close. Something has to be done. We won't be able to sell our house. My, my, my cousin can't sell his house. He lives in Nozown Park, right near Kennedy Boulevard. Those planes are horrible, horrible, and they're worse than those there. Something has to be done about it.
You, you know, it's, it's a very difficult task for us to try and change a, a route for a plane, but.
We understand, but.
We will do it.
They subject us to that because they don't want to spend a little more gas for one the other. That's the only reason they're doing it, because they want to conserve their gas.
Okay. Mike, would it be in order for, for a letter from Mayor and Council to the proper authorities?
I don't think we're there yet, Mayor. I had the Traffic Operations Division reach out to the FAA. They've contacted them twice, they're waiting for a callback. I've experienced this, I live in Elmwood Park, in my yard, and I totally agree with you, but I said, I'm not going to say anything, but I'm going to say something because it's to help you. So, we're going to do whatever we can.
It's to help the town.
It is. Whatever we can do to get it done, I, I'm not, you know, I'm not a big believer.
Why not yours? Don't find a pool that's near our house.
Whatever they could do to make it easier for us, we'll, we'll try to get it done, and we'll keep you, I have your email, and I'll keep you posted, all right?
That's good, that's wonderful. I am more than pleased. The other thing is the pool discharge. People have pools. I'm an engineer, I know what those chemicals do when you put it into the pond or the river. They're running their pool for discharge when they clean it. I haven't thrown it from sewers. They should be fine. They should be fine.
I'm going to ask our Borough Attorney. Do you, are you aware of an ordinance for that, that we have?
I don't.
We did before.
Can we mimic the some pump ordinance and run it into the lawn?
I don't believe we have a discharge for the pool, but I have to, I would have to investigate.
Okay. We'll look into it, and maybe we could.
You know, when I first moved here, when we were figuring about getting a pool, they told us to not, not just clean out the pool and discharge it to the storm sewer. That's one thing.
Where, where, I just out of curiosity, where would you suggest a discharge?
Discharge it into the secondary sewer, would it help?
Can't do that. You can't. We, our bills, our water bills and sewer bills are all based off of that discharge. So, the more you put in there, the more we're going to pay, and then, then we're going to be forced to raise the rates of the water. Am I correct with that? You can't win on this one, I don't think, Claire.
Well, I know rate of sewer are measured by the rate of water you're using. That's how you measure sewer discharge, uh, cost, by how much water you're using, not by how much you're discharging. They can't count that. They can't measure that.
It's, she's correct that how the maintenance is calculated is based on the usage of the discharge. But, I don't think that you are allowed to discharge any kind of water to the sewer, out of the sewer.
Right, yeah.
So, you're saying now the pool can be discharged into the sewer? I mean, the storm drain?
It's the same thing as you cannot discharge rainwater into the sewer.
Correct. So, what do you think of the water now? Discharge it to the storm?
No. You cannot discharge any kind of rainwater or drainwater into a sewer line.
Right.
It's not permitted.
So, storm water?
Storm water or even pool water which becomes sort of the rainwater is surface
water. You cannot discharge surface water into a sewer.
Even with all the chemicals, you don't think that killing our vision?
Killing your vision, where?
Because all that, the pool, I mean, the, the bridge, the, the green that we collect, doesn't discharge it to the water drain?
Goes to treatment center.
Every, every drainage water from surface area rains into hydrants that goes eventually into.
Tre- treatment.
The River or, or some other place for, but the sewage goes into a treating facility.
That I understand, so why can't the pool water go into a treatment?
Because that's considered surface water, not, not sewer water.
Okay.
Okay, it's, it's for the contaminant, the contaminated sewer. So, they do not allow surface water nor which pool water, pool, drainage of the pool would be surface, would be considered surface water, into, into a, a sewer line.
Okay, that's what we were told to do. That's what we've been doing. So, I feel like need for us all to charge the.
It's the same thing that we form in the some pumps, you know, you had in the basin. Some people are putting it into a sewer line. You discharge it into a sewer. That's illegal. You can't do that.
But you discharge it out, okay. So, that will change that.
Is there a number three?
Yes. I have.
I'm psychic, by the way.
No, I have a big problem with people that rent their apartments and forget their homes, forget about their homes, and leave it all up to the residents who just rent. They don't know how to hold, they don't know how to clean, or don't want to or shouldn't. The landlord should be the one cleaning up. There's been too many that aren't.
Yeah. I, I'm in agreement with you. That's why we have property maintenance person that solely, for the most part, does that, and we're constantly on these landlord cases. But however, there's due process of law, and you may think that we're dragging our feet. We are not. We're going through the legal procedures that I'm sure you're aware of.
Okay, just so you're aware of it. And what can I say? Oh, now, cutting up bushes, trees along Elmwood Street, I spoke to a guy, he's like, why do they leave the dead trees there? They're falling over. They could hurt somebody. Or, when you have, I don't know who comes and cuts the trees, or especially when we, I think the bus on Market Street, across from Marcell. They cut the trees, but don't cut it completely, so you have branches that are on the, on the little piece of, of twig that's holding on to the tree. If that broke on somebody's head, hit dead, because it's going to break like that.
No, I hear you.
We need better grooming of our trees, removal of dead trees, and better maintenance. Our town used to look so nice. It looks dirty now. It does. And we have to pull on the state to come and take the lady, all the concrete that's falling off on the corner. And you could see the steel.
Where's that, Claire?
Right, right on Holovard, when you pass Marcell, when, when, when you see the overpass, right on the. I took a picture of it. What you can see.
Before Birchwood Deli?
No, it's at, going to 40th St.
After Birchwood.
After Birchwood.
And then there's an overpass this way.
That's the Parkway, isn't it? Yeah.
You can see the steel. That's the metaphor on somebody's head, too. It's just breaking away. And I, I would, I, I would volunteer to take pictures, bring them to you, because we.
Well, hopefully, our politicians in Washington are going to approve this infrastructure deal, and maybe we'll see some of that money, and we can point that out to the state people, and maybe, maybe we can remedy that situation.
Even though, you know, the bridge at over Marcell, over the, over the waters to the other side, that's a, it would be a tremendous effort for both of them.
Within the Marcell property?
Marcell's here, and then there's a railroad that goes to the other side of the bridge.
Huh.
Like, in the other town, I think. So, is that still, I'm not sure. Have you, yeah. You could see that, too. The railroad also comes.
Yeah. Well, that's why they're pushing on this infrastructure bill. Both sides, they're actually doing something for us that is, is right, both parties.
I'm in charge.
Yeah. That's it, Claire, what was that, four or five?
Four.
Four?
And I really get, I'm going to get signature without complaining, because I might be responsible for my.
All right.
Thank you for speaking up.
What?
Thank you for speaking up. Anyone else cared to speak at this time regarding any matter they wish? If not, I'll close the public portion. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. First on the agenda, we have resolutions. With that being said, Items Number A and B will be pulled for a later time. With that being said, moving on to 1C. Similar to what was done at an August meeting for redevelopment property on Route 46, our planner and redevelopment attorney recommend doing the same, setting up escrow fees for other redevelopment plans so that no money needs to be laid out by the borough and can come directly from the redevelopers. So, with that being said, just looking for your approval to have the attorney draft the same resolution for other projects.
Any questions by the council on this? Erin?
Okay, 1D is a request from Commissioner Tracy Zor for the borough to adopt a resolution honoring September as Hunger Action Month, and there is a sample resolution provided in your packets as well.
Any disapproval, I should say, by the council?
Okay, moving on to 1E. It is a yearly block party request for the same area in town.
Only if the mayor and council invited.
Any questions? Okay, moving on to 1F. We have fire department volunteers for approval. Any questions? 1G, we have from the police department through their Capitol request that were already approved this year. We need resolutions to approve the purchase of pedestrian signage.
Mike, you want to elaborate on that a little?
Yeah, it's a process, Mayor. We're putting some LED pedestrian warning signs along Mola Boulevard to enhance the safety of the pedestrians in that area when crossing.
Thank you, Michael.
Chief, I, Mayor, a question.
Sure, sure.
Chief, with each specific area, the first one, 10, do you have a specific intersection in mind?
We do. 16th and Mola Boulevard, I believe Gilbert and Mola Boulevard. There is going to be one by the Company 4, by Veterans Place, and I want to say one by Elmwood Drive and Mola Boulevard. The common areas where pedestrians cross and there's no.
And there's two, there's two at each one?
There's two at each one, yes.
Got you.
Mike, what happens if, by the postal service?
Yeah, there's one, there's one going there.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a timeline on this?
Uh, it's a process. So, as soon as possible, once we get the resolution, then we can purchase the equipment, and then we can schedule it to get installed.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 1H. It's our annual used car license renewals.
And that's for used car deal, is it?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
What do we charge them?
I do not know off the top of my head. I want to say it is over 200, but this is handled through Marlene Di Stefano, based off of the ordinance.
If it's 200, I think we should look at this, and I.
What's on your mind, Daniel?
What?
He would like to look into increasing the fees.
I said I'd like to look at this. Well, yes, increase the fees.
Council, the.
No, I'm just saying, just for discussion in the future.
But, we're going to renew this?
Yeah, no problem. Just make it a comment.
Okay.
Would you like me to add it for next week's discussion, once I know the exact amount?
It's not that important right now, because we're renewing for next year, right?
We're renewing for this year.
Okay.
So, what do we do with it?
For '21?
Yes.
That already happened, mostly.
It's always done at this time of year.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Just, when you find out the number, just let me know.
Okay.
But, in the interim, we're giving her the okay?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, 1I, there's no backup, but to coincide with the newly adopted ordinance establishing a board regarding cannabis and marijuana. In the ordinance, it calls for five members, of which would need to be appointed. With that being said, Mayor?
There was some thought that it's, it's a double process. We're forming a committee that will vet the applicants and then go to the council. So, I had some thinking about trying to eliminate that committee and just let the whole council be the committee, but I'd like to turn that over to our, our legal attorney and let him talk about it.
Mayor, I understand that potentially the rational reason why you would want to eliminate a layer of bureaucracy, okay, and a lot of times I would sit here and I would agree with you that potentially that would be the best way. However, there's a rational reason why I recommend the particular concept of a board being an advisory board as well as an administrative board, to take on the responsibilities of dealing with the new ordinance. The new ordinance is a particular legislation which even the state in recent time has also created a separate board to deal with the cannabis law. As a matter of fact, it was only last week that the first time they met, they issued a 160-page regulation that deals with what municipalities can do, what they can do, what their process is, all sorts of delineated regulations that control the, the particular statute. And under those circumstances, it becomes more viable whereby a board would be the individuals with not too many involved that would vent out any kind of application, create process, create some rules, how to apply, when to apply, when, at all end, in order to give more meat and substance to the ordinance itself. It does two things also. It does, it creates a level of due process, meaning that the board, which is an advisory administrative board, will do the legwork and the investigations and the process of making the recommendation to the council whether a particular licensee should be approved or not approved. That licensee could also have the opportunity of coming before the council then to either contest or make arguments to the council, who would be actually the final body that would either grant or deny the license. So, in a procedural sense, and with, with ideal with my background, I felt that that is such an importance because you want to eliminate potential lawsuits. And by giving an opportunity to have that process, where there is a initial determination and a recommendation, then the council will have the final where the arguments can be made accordingly, to either contest the denial or the approval. Someone can contest the approval of a license, depending on the position, where the property is, where it's located. You may have people that might contest that license initially. So, for you to have, and the board, this council, to have that responsibility, that initial responsibility, cutting out a potential way that you are somewhat responsible only when the time comes to make a decision, the final decision, rather than being buckled down depending on how many applications you're going to have, you may have meetings beyond what we have here. I mean, it's, I think it would be a strain on, on the council itself.
Well, the.
My opinion would be to leave it as a board, and let the board function just like the advisory committee or the, the board that's created by the state, dealing with the everyday operations of the license.
I, I do understand what you're saying. My concern is a typical situation here, like tonight. I, I believe we have some people from a cannabis organization, and they're going to speak to the whole council. So, is it the cart before the horse, or the horse before the cart?
That's, that's a cart before the horse. And if they're here and they want to speak, first, I would, I would have to say that under the circumstances, they could only speak in the time period that you have sent them for public comments. They are not actually to speak with regards to anything that's going on, or whatever. This is a, a work session. They can speak, and they, anyone can speak. And I would, at that time, should they ask what the process is, I would be more inclined to answer.
The other question I have is, I know if I was being scrutinized, I would rather have seven people scrutinize me as opposed to five. That's the other aspect. And then, if there's any conflict between the committee and the council, and they're going back and forth, all that downtime in between could be detrimental to the situation.
Mayor, I would, again, I would agree with you. If I didn't feel strongly about giving the opportunity to have a two-layer appeal process, because if the council gets involved in the initial determination, then the only avenue is to appeal you to the board.
Okay.
I, I'd like to give the opportunity to be heard, at least a process can be heard before actually going into litigation.
Does the council have any opinions?
Mayor, I have questions for the Borough Attorney, but I, I don't feel comfortable doing them out in public. So, I, I do have questions on this subject, but I'd rather get into an executive personally.
I agree.
Okay, okay. Sandy?
Yes, I agree.
Mr. Vasolo, any, any comments? No, it's, it's, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, we have him back with us. He was in Italy for eight weeks, God bless him, and he came, but did you put any weight on? They, they say the food is fabulous.
Yeah, it was, it was definitely, it was good. Five pounds, man.
Five, five pounds, all right, you'll get that off. Shaqib, any comments on this? So, how do you want to leave this, then? We just, I can't?
I would say open-ended for now, Mayor.
Open-ended, okay. All right, agreed, council? Moving along.
Okay, this may be a further discussion in executive as well, but at our public meeting in August, there were additional compensations awarded to two employees. Therefore, I do believe that there will be an update needed for our salary ordinance, and Sal could discuss it more in executive.
I would strongly suggest that particular aspect could be already discussed at that time.
Yes. With that being said, Mayor, that's all I have for my agenda this evening.
Thank you, Erin. Committee reports. Councilwoman Ballastery.
Thank you, Mayor.
Came up on you quick, huh?
Yes, you certainly did. Okay, I just want to mention the softball celebrating their 50th year anniversary on Tuesday, October 5th, 6 o'clock at the Venetian. Tickets are $50 a head. There's also an ad journal available to purchase, quarter, half-page, or full-page. If anyone is interested, feel free to reach out to me. Our next Recreation Advisory Board meeting will be on Monday, September 20th, at 7:30. Community Day, September 12th, from 1 to 6. And I also would like to mention this past Sunday, I attended the block party that was sponsored by our police department. It was a great way to end the summer. This event was such a success. There were many residents and their children enjoying such a beautiful day. I'm very proud of our Elmwood Park Police Department and their sincere love for our community and always resident-friendly. Thank you to our rec director, diversity committee, and all our volunteers. A big shout-out to Tanisha Dennis, who is always volunteering her time for all these events. Our chief, Philigno, and Councilman Ficore did a great job cooking and serving burgers and hot dogs, so they were hands-on that day. So, to everyone, thank you for all those that donated food, school supplies, and their time. Mayor, it couldn't have been a better day.
No, it was, it was very nice. It was, I would say, 300, 400 people.
Yeah, it was great, great turnout.
And we had the giveaway for the school supplies.
Right, and the bike.
And the bike.
Bike raffle, yeah.
And then the food.
Yeah.
And for those.
We had the bouncy house for the children.
Bouncy house for the kids.
It was something for everyone.
Yeah, and from what I understand, we had 300, 400 people there, and the cost to the town was $900. If you break that down per resident, you'll see it's insignificant. Great job on the events committee, and I don't want to praise him too much.
Yeah, I don't want to forget, I don't want to forget anybody.
He might start getting a big head over here. We have to increase the size of his police, his, his police, but.
Thank you, Mayor, but the committee is, is really the, the one to thank. They did an amazing job acquiring all those school supplies for the children at no cost to anyone. So, they did a really great job, and I can't thank them enough. Tanisha's here, and Shaqib's also on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The school supplies and the food was donated. And once again, I don't want to give him a big head, but when they ran out of food in the end, Mr. Philigno went into his own pocket, $200, and went and bought more food. So, yes, another round of applause for that. Okay, Mike, what was the size of your head before?
Seven and three-quarters.
No, the praise is well-deserved for everyone that made this a success that day. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, great, great report. Mr. Ficori?
Thank you, Mayor. So I also attended the block party. It was a great success. So I just want to thank everybody in the committee, Tanisha and everybody else by name. If I called them here, we'd be here all night. But I want to thank Chef Philigno, not Chief Philigno. He was a chef. He did a great job. The food was great. I want to thank everybody that donated their time, their supplies, just being there. It was great to see the mayor, and he was great. Councilman Fasolo, I know you weren't here, but I know you were texting, telling everybody what's going on. You were involved even though you were 4,000 miles away. I want to thank you again. And thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, for all their support. Thanks.
And I also want to make a comment that you were a chef also, Mr. Ficori? For sure. And Mr. Fasolo, don't feel too bad for him because he was eating spaghetti and meatballs while we were eating hamburgers, so don't feel too bad for him. And speaking of Mr. Fasolo, ladies and gentlemen, straight from the other side of the world, Mr. Fasolo.
Thank you, Mayor. You took away a lot of my report because you exposed how much weight I gained. But I want to commend all the hard work from our first responders last night. We had a lot of damage in town to a lot of people's houses, and I just want to say our prayers are with everybody, you know, for a speedy recovery and stuff like that. So for the diversity committee, I want to commend them for their excellent work and all the events this summer. We're building a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance in Elmwood Park. And the police department, along with the diversity committee, has really, really took the lead on that and a lot of success there. For the youth committee, we're starting back up with school right around the corner. We're going to start with youth internship program in town. We're going to start setting that up. So a lot of good things coming down the pike here for the future. Progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Goleback?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo everything about the community events, the block party. I'm glad we're doing events in all parts of the borough, not just centrally in the, you know, at the rec center. Very excited about the community day coming up, fireworks in Elmwood Park, which I don't think I've ever lived to see fireworks in Elmwood Park. We did have a laser beam show, but now we're doing fireworks, so I'm very excited about that. Councilman Fasolo, welcome back. We had some fun without you. But don't worry, there's more for, more fun in store for the rest of the year.
Can't wait.
So, progress, Mayor.
Yeah, I agree with you, Daniel. That nice, fresh look he has now? A couple of weeks from now, we want to see what he looks like. Yes. Councilwoman Pellegreen, she is in California, I believe, right? Her son is just become a major in the, what force is it? Do you know, Army, Navy?
The Air Force.
Air Force. Good for her, good for, good for all of them. Council President Wetzler?
Okay, first I'd like to thank our DPW team, our first responders and everything, for everything they did since yesterday afternoon today. Without them, I don't know what Elmwood Park would look like today, right now. Mike, I want to thank you for putting up Black's half-staff for me when I called you the other day. I wish, could we leave him up to 30 days, please?
Well, you took Mr. Freitag's job. He's usually reminding me, and thank you for doing that, but Doris beat you to it this time, so...
I wanted that, I wanted it done right away. The block party, I thank everybody for all their help and everything else. Let me tell you, what this town has done, with Mike and all the committees that have been working, this year has been one fantastic year compared to last year that we had to be inside where nobody could talk to anybody. Now we're making up for it, and I thank everybody and everyone that donated, Tanisha, Shaqib, and everybody else, and Mike and this police department, for everything that they've been doing. And this town has come together as a family, what it used to be, and now it's coming together even more. Progress.
Thank you, well said, Doris. Well, mostly everything has been said. I don't want to sound redundant, but there's a few items. Our concert series that had eight parts to it concluded not too long back, and it was very successful in the sense that we went from maybe the first concert, 125 people, to the last concert, estimated at 800. So what we're doing there is working. It'll be tweaked this year, and I'm looking forward to another great series of concerts next year. The block party, excellent. 300, 400 people there, it was a nice day. Nobody mentioned that the mayor was out there in the sun, walking along and sweating, but that's okay, that's okay, that's okay. That's his job. You're 100% right. It's his job to talk, right? No, no, grilled, I couldn't. It was, you had chef number one and chef number two. Now, do you think I am going to become combatant with those two young fellows? No, I'll walk around and talk, so... We also had a second softball game between our police force of Elmwood Park and Garfield. Sadly enough, we lost again, typical in the seventh inning. They had last licks or last ups, as you, that's a baseball term, by the way. And we weren't successful. But we do want to say, in case there's anybody from Garfield listening, that this, this will go noticed, and we are going to be sharper and more prepared. Maybe, Mike, we got to run a training camp to keep the boys from falling apart in the seventh inning. Right? But in any case, Mike, are we going to do other games?
We're working on Ridgefield Park and Fairlawn PD. We'll keep you posted, though.
Okay, then maybe we can play Garfield in January.
The ice ball, football game.
They're so, they're so hot, we can cool them off. So, all right, so my compliments to the boys out there. They gave it hell. We looked really good, too. And Garfield looked as good, and that's, it was a close game and clean game. With that said, I'm going to open, I need a motion to open to the public.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to backtrack really quickly. I found out that the car renewal fee is $650, so my apologies.
I'm good with that.
Good with that?
Yeah.
Not 200, there's a big difference.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with you. Okay, takes care of that. Anything else, Erin? Anyone from, I need a motion to open to the public. Anyone from the public here to speak on any topic whatsoever? The last report I got, they were still trying to get some permit hurdles. They were minor, but still no cigar at this point.
A couple of months ago?
No, it was a couple, a couple of weeks ago. That's the last report, typical...
Well, there was no meeting of the library board in August.
Correct.
The live one, it was stated that it would be like very soon.
My conversation with the director was there were still some odds and ends, and that took place two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago. Minor things. I don't know, I don't know the specifics of it, but... Yeah, yeah.
They're waiting for inspections, five inspections.
Inspections from the town?
Yes, and from the C and J. And then once they close the water around the boulevard, that would reduce the water in the new library, they'll take at least two to three weeks for buckles to come over and close down the hut and move all the waters from the hut over to the new building.
So we're not looking at it opening anytime soon.
At least I wouldn't expect it probably November.
But I don't understand, because I know libraries are ready from what I could see, and it's two and a half years in the city, doors closed, and all these successful events can be pulled together, and sunny in town, lots on it, all new, and committees. So we can't get inspections done from people who work here?
That's not the...
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here because I do not believe our building department is holding any of this up. And I have no oversight over the library, so you're talking to the wrong... I don't know, I don't, but you said we can't get the inspections done.
Well, why is, there's no president, can be put on anyone? Is it something that...
My understanding is the library is run by the library board, not by the borough. I don't have any say over the library. I don't say you're blaming me, but...
We have a couple of people right here on the library board.
Right, right. Let me say this. Everything that could be done to expedite the conclusion and opening of that library has been done.
There's nothing waiting to be done other than inspection?
It's the contractor and it's the architect. If you want to point a finger, that's why I would be pointing a finger right now. Not in the municipal building, because it's been top priority for us to expedite any way we possibly could. Because this is, it's a shame, two and a half years. You're right. It's, I would use the word disgusting, but what are we going to do? We got to get to the conclusion.
But you got to remember, we were shut down for almost over a year because of the COVID. So you can't blame it almost a year on the building being not done because of the COVID. Everything was shut down.
It was for a while, that that's definitely...
So, but equal, and then all the problems in between that we had, you know? So there's always been something that we did one thing, and then something else happened that we had to repair. So you're not going to open a library, I don't care who's going to be it, you're not going to open a library that we spent so much money on to have something wrong with it as we opened the library. Why wasn't this complete? Why wasn't that complete? Why wasn't that corrected?
Yeah.
You can't do that. You want everything done the right way. So once we open this door, this door is going to be beautiful. Library is going to be absolutely amazing. So you want it down, you know, everything wrapped, packed, want it to be perfect.
Yeah.
So if we have to wait an extra month or two, who is waiting an extra month or two?
So maybe a few more months, please.
Yes.
We're all frustrated. Well, you could see we're frustrated.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else care to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion. May I have a motion to enter into executive?
Second.
All in favor? You don't need to vote on that, do you?
No.
Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to ask the public to leave now, please, as we go into executive.
Where is the Open Public Meanings Act PL 1975, chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances? And where is this public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist? And where is the governing body wishes to discuss legal reports, litigation, and personnel? Minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires the confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.